Hi, everyone. Welcome to the December sixth, two thousand twenty-one Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Morantz.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
I don't know if Josh is here yet. He said he was gonna be a little bit late. Josh Levine. I'll be joining us momentarily. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons. Mike Barbieri.
Here.
Thank you. This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with chapter fifty-eight of two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is convened by Zoom webinar, as posted on the agenda and Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda, posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment or resident comment using the Zoom webinar format. Members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists and unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify. Individual will be afforded three minutes for con- comments. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Okay, so tonight we have.
Mark, if we could just have the, uh, the school committee chair and the finance committee chair just give a roll call uh, to their members to make sure everyone's present, that'd be great. You want me to go, Mark?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Go, Kevin. All right, this is Kevin Shay, Chair of the School Committee. First, I wanna call the December sixth, twenty twenty-one School Committee meeting to order. Uh, and I would like to, uh, have our members answering the affirmative when I call your name. Gianna Allentuck.
Here.
Uh, Suzie Bell.
Here.
Jamie Hench. Ronwyn Monahan.
Here.
And Nicole Schwinnair.
Here.
And I know that we have one member missing. Mary Keane is not with us tonight. So that's all of us.
This is Armin Ray, Chair of Finance Committee. I'll be confirming all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Maury Garrett.
Here.
Thanks, Maury. Angela Lamb.
Here.
Tom Dignazio.
Here.
Laura McKay.
Here.
Not present at this time are William Welch and, uh, Don Griffiths, who is teaching and will join as soon as he can. We expect that William will be here, uh, momentarily. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Jen Leighton. I see you say.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you.
So are you guys all set? Do you need to call your meetings to order, or are we good?
I think we're called to order.
Okay. So tonight we have a joint meeting with the School Committee and the Finance Committee to kick off our budget season. Um, tonight Jennifer Layden, who's the, uh, CFO for the town, is gonna be presenting, uh, presentation on the budget. Um, after which, um, all the select board, School Committee, and Finance Committee members who have questions um, can ask questions, I'm Jen, Jennifer, and Lynn, and, uh, we'll go from there. So, uh, at this point, I'm gonna flip it over to Jennifer so she can, uh, do her presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Um, just wanna say thank you for the opportunity tonight. Um, it's a little bit early and this is a preliminary budget. I'm hoping to make it, uh, pretty quick. I don't wanna bore you with too many details, but just kind of would like to go over what we're looking at for projections, uh, to date. So let me just share my screen. Um, it says host disabled participants share screening. It'll be all set now. Okay. Just go into here. And present. All right. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So, welcome to the FY twenty-three Long Meadow Preliminary Budget. Um, what I'd like to present that's a little different from in previous years is I'm going to create the budget around certain goals and, um, three goals kind of rose to the top. Without a town or school strategic plan that I have to pull from, um, I just used, today's my six-month anniversary, so I just used the information that I've gotten so far um, to create three goals that have risen to the top based on information that I've been involved with so far. So the first one, obviously, is to demonstrate fiscal responsibility in sound financial management. Um, the two-and-a-half percent levy, uh, tax ceiling has been a big conversation um, across the board. For a little while, obviously, within the town, there are tax ceiling committees and, um, this isn't the first time you guys are hearing about that. But obviously, the, the key action is to maintain level service with a municipal tax rate increase under the allowed two-and-a-half percent in order to push out, um, us reaching the ceiling. Also, we'd like to maintain the town's triple-A credit bond rating and secure low-cost financing if necessary. We'd also like to leverage the ARPA funds to mitigate future health and infrastructure expenses and implement updated financial policies that include prepayment for programs and consistent town-wide collection policies. The second goal that, um, has been created through this budget is to operate a safe and responsive, healthy town government post COVID nineteen. Obviously, we're not post-COVID yet, um, as, as the virus continues to change and, um, create, uh, I don't wanna say havoc, but we're not out of it yet, but we are learning as a town and we are learning as a community. So what, what has come out of this is we need to maintain quality employees. Um, in order to do that, Lynn has asked that a wage study be added to this budget. We're also looking at, all the contracts are coming up for negotiations and the DPW study is, um, is in progress. I don't think that has been published yet. We also wanna attract quality employees again through the wage study, implementing the DPW study, and recruit more aggressively. We'd also like to upgrade and consolidate town facilities by leveraging ARPA funding to consolidate two buildings and leverage ARPA and capital funding to upgrade remaining buildings. Thirdly, the key goal of this budget is to collaborate with the schools and other municipalities and generate additional revenue. We'd like to increase grant revenue, and we've done so, um, through one, through the Public Health Excellence Grant. We are awarded three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's been a work in progress over a couple of years. Um, that's to regionalize our health departments in smaller communities. Um, that's come before the Select Board a few times and, and other towns have approved that as well. Additionally, our Assistant Town Manager has submitted eight new grants to date since she started. And we'd also like to research and submit MSBA statements of interest for appropriate projects in collaboration with the school department. We also wanna collaborate with schools on priority project applications for CPA funds, MSBA accelerated repair grants, and capital funds. We're also looking at alternative power for another revenue source, and that's through solar leasing. So here's a quick twenty twenty-three municipal budget overview, revenues, and expenses. So these are just the highlights for the general town. We're looking at a total projected revenue increase in twenty-three of two-point-one-six-two million dollars. That is at the tax levy of two-and-a-half percent. Hundred and seventy-five thousand in new growth and expected prior year tax revenue of four hundred thousand dollars. Local receipts projected to increase two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. If we levy at two percent, we'll levy, our total levy will be one-point-six-three million, a decrease of two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. If we decide to levy at one-point-seven-five, we'll be able to receive one-point-five million, a decrease of three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars of what we're able to levy. On the other side of that, our expenses are expected to increase two-point-two-eight million dollars. The big major, the main majority of that is come from school contract negotiations. We're expecting that to be anywhere between nine-hundred and a million dollars. School expense increases of about a hundred thousand, but those expenses support goal two, to maintain quality employees. Also, we're looking at benefits that increase about eight-hundred thousand dollars. Four hundreds coming from pension obligations. That's an increase of ten percent. Two-hundred-and-forty for employee and retiree health insurance. That's an increase of eight percent. And a hundred-and-twenty thousand for liability insurance, and that's because we're adding the DPW and Adult Center Square footage. This also supports goal two of the budget, to maintain quality employees. Town contract negotiations are also up this year. Looking at, um, projected that to add to the budget about three-hundred thousand dollars. Again, that supports goal two, to maintain quality employees. And that wage study I spoke about earlier, that's expected to cost about two-hundred thousand dollars. Also supporting goal two, maintain quality employees. And implement the DPW study recommendations. We do not have a number on that yet. That also supports goal two, maintain and attract quality employees. That all being said, when you sum that all up, if we do levy at two-point-five percent, that leaves us a gap at a hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. If we levy at two percent, we have a gap of three-hundred-and-two thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, excuse me. If we levy at one-point-seven-five-five percent, we have a gap of five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. Water sewer and stormwater fund highlights. We're looking at the water rate to go to three dollars and sixty-nine cents or two-point-eighty-one percent increase. That's, oh, from FY twenty-two's rate of three dollars and fifty-nine cents. They asked through the water fund, the water fund increase of seventy-two thousand dollars because of water usage and capital outlay because of all the projects that, that spring draw water and sewer commission are working on. Our sewer rate is looking, uh, about two dollars and sixty-five cents or a point-three-nine percent decrease over FY twenty-two, which was two dollars and seventy cents. And that has to do with, uh, debt retirement, about thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Maple and Ellington Street projects. Stormwater looks to be, uh, the rate about five dollars and twenty-one cents or a three percent increase over FY twenty-two, which is five dollars and six cents. And that is per the financial policy amended by the Select Board on January twenty-first of twenty twenty. Have ten thousand of oxygen annual commitment at four-point-eleven percent. Um, stormwater is decreasing, though, their expenses, because they have debt retirement as well uh, from the Maple Street project, so that's why the, um, revenue isn't going up, the four percent. Uh, capital funds and retained earnings, just to give you guys an overview, uh, the capital budget projections, the capital budget projected to be about two million and ten thousand dollars. Our retained earnings in water, as approved by the DOR, is four hundred thousand. Sewers, seven hundred and ten thousand. Stormwater is two-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars. Again, there's a financial policy as amended by the Select Board in same, uh, same board meeting, January twenty-first of twenty twenty, to have minimum reserve balances of about five hundred thousand dollars in the enterprise funds. The FY twenty-three request that came in so far to date is about six million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, about two million, seven-hundred thousand, you have the projects. Building upgrades are coming in at just under two million. Pavement preservation, one-point-three million. Sidewalk, four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Public safety equipment, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and planning costs, about thirty-five thousand dollars. The capital recommendations have been sent to the Capital Planning Committee, which have, I believe, have had their first, uh, meeting. So for those of you that like to look at, um, the numbers year over year, here are the general fund expenses. Uh, the operating budget we're looking at to be about seventy-one million, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. This includes the five hundred thousand dollars in the stormwater fund supplement. Um, our capital budget, as I just said, is two million and ten thousand dollars, so the total, seventy-three million, two-hundred thousand dollars. That's a four percent increase over last year's budget. Our general fund revenue, our local receipts are projected to come in about five-point-six million. State aid, I kept flat, seven-point-one million. There hasn't been any indication from the state that it'll go up or down, so right now I'm keeping it flat. And property taxes at about sixty million, three-hundred thousand dollars. That leaves the gap that I, um, told you in the beginning about, a hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. Again, that's if it's levied at two-and-a-half percent. If it's levied at the one-point-seventy-five, one-point-seven-five percent, our property tax number will go down. That'll leave us a gap of about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the financial total summary for the operating budget of water, it's for each, two-point-one million. Sewers, two-point-two million, and stormwater is nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Um, two, two percent increase for water, negative two percent decrease for sewer, that's because of the debts coming off, and a negative six percent decrease in stormwater, that's because the debt's coming off. But the rates are increasing, so the, um, general fund isn't supplementing the stormwater fund. That's about that. Um, just wanted to give you a five-year look back by department, just so you can see, um, what your financial policies and decisions have done during over here, and what, uh, outside factors have affected the budget as well. Um, this kind of just gives you a nice overview of where, where we were as a town. Our general government has increased twenty-three percent, mainly due to legal expenses. Um, obviously, the DPW and the, the pipeline have been the main factors. Um, if you jump down to community services, there's a huge decrease of almost twenty-four percent. That's mainly due to daycare expenses because it was closed, closed during COVID. Um, debt service has increased thirty-eight-point, point-nine-five percent. That has, obviously has to do with LHS, DPW, and the Adult Center. Again, those decision, those decisions, um, how much that impacts the, the budget. And employee benefits and liability insurance, it's a twenty-five, almost twenty-six percent increase. Um, a million-dollar increase in insurance, a million-dollar increase in pension obligations, hundred-thousand-dollar increase in OEBB and liability insurance since FY seventeen. And for those of you that like chart more the numbers, um, this just gives you a breakdown of the FY twenty-five, twenty-one general fund, um, actuals and FY twenty-two actuals. Um, you know, biggest part of, of the pie is school department. It's about fif, it was fifty-six percent in twenty-one and fifty-four percent in twenty-two. Um, the next highest, uh, expense liability is the employee benefits coming in at seventeen percent and then debt service. So, um, again, that's why we'd like, um, a collaborative effort in, um, this budget this year. Obviously, it was done in, in previous years, but as we approach the, the debt ceiling, we're, we're gonna need it more than ever since the school department is the majority of the budget. So the FY twenty-three financial summary, we have a budget gap, be a hundred-and-eighteen thousand and five-hundred thousand, depending on, uh, where we levy. My recommendation is to submit a level service budget with a point-seven percent reduced budget with an explanation of how that'll affect services. That point-seven percent, um, will get, will close the five-hundred thousand dollar gap so that we can levy at one-point-seven-five percent. Looking forward, FY twenty-four to FY twenty-three, the first five years, the gap isn't that big, but that's if we're lev, levying two-and-a-half percent. I'm not gonna go in the detail, but it is on there for those of you who like to, um, crunch the numbers. Um, we're looking at, you know, just using the increases that I've seen from seventeen to twenty-two and pushing those out going forward and using a standard three percent escalator. Um, the budget looks to grow to about seventy-seven million dollars or a thirteen percent increase over twenty-two. The, um, revenues are not increasing as much, mainly, you know, obviously mainly due to, um, new growth and only levying at two-and-a-half percent. And then six to ten years out, um, this is where we hit the debt ceiling. This is where it looks pretty scary. Um, expense-wise, if we just use a simple three percent escalator each year, we're looking at a budget of about eighty-eight-point-eight million dollars. Um, in FY thirty-three, this is when we hit the twenty-five dollar mark. Um, and the numbers work out as follows. We'll, we'll be able to use a prior year levy limit, but we will not be able to get the two, full two-and-a-half percent increase. We'll only be able to use, um, levy six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, not use any new growth. Um, and, you know, local receipts, just a three percent escalator there, and state aid, a three percent escalator. That'll get us about eighty-seven million dollars, resulting in a one-point-eight million dollar gap. So at that time, you know, that, that's a pretty big gap for this size budget and, you know, major decisions are gonna be made. So really, I think as a town, and, and what I'm trying to present tonight, is, um, we really need to decide if the town and schools collectively wanna reduce spending now at about five hundred thousand dollars together or about one-point-eight million dollars all at once. Um, also, the, you know, the tax rate ceiling task force is working on all the other financial constraint to make a re, recommendation of how the town should move forward. So that's the future. That's what it looks like, uh, with, with the numbers that we have today. And again, we're looking at about, uh, anywhere between a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar to five-hundred thousand dollar budget gap for FY twenty-three. Any questions? Thank you. I know that was fast and long-winded.
Hey, Jen, let me just kick off from the Finance Committee perspective of, uh, just saying thank you very much for, for laying out the budget in the way that you did. Um, I can say that I, in my years since around two thousand and six, it's been laid out in a bunch of different ways, this, and never really this early. Um, but I think you put it in a concise manner that was easy to follow. Um, I think you also, uh, did very good justice to not only showing, uh, what the budget looks like, but what are the different, uh, decision points that the different boards can make together to, uh, to come together to, 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 to plan out instead of having a foregone conclusion in front of us and, and not really discussing what each of those options look like. So I love the fact that you put options out there as well and let people understand what those options are in an easy-to, uh, easy-to-read fashion. Um, I know from Finance Committee, we can only, I can only speak to what we've, uh, you know, looked at and, and suggested that the one-point-seven-eight percent, uh, is, is, as a board, you know, what we feel is a prudent way of, of going forward to, to the, the path forward. But I do appreciate that you put those options out there for what I think should be a pretty engaging discussion tonight. So, so thanks for your work, cuz I, I think I can tell you, I've had multiple conversations with different people who, who have looked at this and said they really appreciate the, the way you positioned it.
Thank you.
Jen, can I just interject with, I asked you to clarify something that you said very quickly, but I think you made a recommendation that to maintain the one-point-seven-five, you said you would recommend, was it a point-seven percent budget reduction?
Correct.
I mean, I, I appreciate you making that suggestion. I think that, um, it could be a lot worse, and I think that, that's, um, something that I'm sure, based on what the Finance Committee voted on, that we would be in favor of, um, supporting something like that.
And forgive me, that's point-seven across the board, correct? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Sorry, Mark. I, I just wanted to, to thank Jen upfront for the work she did, cuz I think it was, it, it was really good. I'll, I'll hit it back to you.
Yeah, I'm proud. I appreciate you doing that. Um, does, so we've already had a couple of questions. Does anybody else have, have questions? Um, I'm sure Mark, Mark Gold probably has a question or two.
Good, Mark. Thank you. It's Jennifer again. I'll, I'll add my thanks, thanks to, uh, to Armin's. This was a great presentation. Couple of comments and, and some questions. The biggest comment is that up in front, one of your, your, you know, bases for this was that, uh, you know, we wanna stay competitive with, with our pay, pay for employees and keep good employees. One of the things that the town did ten, fifteen, fifteen years ago or so, that we need to understand and, and take into account is that many of our employees only work thirty-six hour weeks. We cut their, their time ten percent, cut their pay ten percent. And, you know, many people tend to forget that. They say, gee, if I work as a such-and-such in another town, I'm gonna get a, a, a ten percent pay raise. You know, and, but they're gonna work forty-hour weeks, and I think we need to either make those consistent or make those better known. If we're paying ten percent less, it's because they're paying, they're working ten percent less hours, and, and that, that's been lost over the last ten or, ten or twelve years. You know, we, we keep being told we're not competitive in salary, but, you know, that, I, I wanted to make that point. The other point I wanted to make was that, uh, you know, you talked about the enterprise funds, but I think those people, we, we need to keep in, in, in mind that those are independent of the budget. They're independent enterprise funds. In fact, we're probably gonna totally renovate the, the, cuz we already voted to do that, the water, uh, billing system, and it's gonna throw that kind of it for a loop. Uh, and, but those don't get impacted at all by decisions we may make around the budget. They need to be, and they are independently financed and, and independently, uh, balanced. So I think that's important. The, the other thing is that, you know, I, I was Chair of the Capital Planning Committee fifteen years ago. We had a capital budget of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. It's now two million dollars, and clearly, we could use all two million dollars of it. The, the point is, though, that maybe we can defer some of those, A, and B, I, I believe there's gonna be a, an influx of federal funds for capital improvements. And the question is, before we take drastic actions, do we wanna potentially look at adjusting our capital budget, uh, to understand that there's gonna be an infusion of dedicated funds for capital so that we don't have to use tax revenue for capital, and people oughta, oughta keep, keep that in mind. Uh, the, the final thing is that, that, you know, we've heard of, and it's somewhat anecdotal, but I don't think it's all that anecdotal, a, a run-up in values of properties. And so I think people need to understand that we're still working on two thousand and nineteen property values, and we're going to be getting some updated property values. You know, that doesn't change our budget, doesn't change how much we spend, but it ju, does change the tax rate. You know, if property values should go up eight, ten, or, or more percent, which it's looking like they're doing in other communities in, in Massachusetts that have done it, and Western Mass does always lag, you know, we may find- You know, we may find that this five year, uh, tax ceiling situation may extend out six years or seven years and give us a little bit more leeway. And so I challenge people to not take too many drastic actions until we see the impact that COVID's had on our on our property values and how property values may be impacting, uh, the that that tax decision. So all in all, I I I see what you've done and I appreciate it. I think we've got to discount the the enterprise funds, but, uh, I I I believe that we can look forward and see what we're doing with capital and and other outside funds before we make any drastic decisions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Kevin, do you have your hand up?
I do. Um, and Mark, if you don't mind, I I'd love to get the the school perspective in on this. Um, so if that's okay with you, um, yeah. So, okay, so first, Jennifer, thanks. This is super helpful, um, and and I agree with what others have said. This is great. So thank you for all the time and and effort you put into this. Um, I think it's really putting us on the right track and and I really appreciate what others have said and what you have said about the idea that that we need to collaborate. And I I fully agree with that and and I know that we're all gonna work together because it's gonna be a challenging year. It's gonna be a challenging couple of years and we're gonna have to work together. So I really appreciate that sense of collaboration. Um, and I think at at this point, I was just hoping that that maybe Marty and Tom could just give, uh, an overview of some of the challenges that we're facing uh, on the school side, just so people can can know where we're coming from a- as we work on our budget. So, Mark, if that's okay, I'd love to to call on Marty and Tom just to to give an update from their perspective.
Absolutely.
Happy to, uh, happy to kick us off and and Tom can, uh, is is is, uh, on top of the details and and can fill in for sure. I think, um, you know, just globally, um, we're seeing this is remains a challenging year. I think it's a, it's a more difficult year than we all imagined. And some of the the challenges that students are facing, we expect will still be upon us this year. So, school committee back, uh, in the spring had decided to make some critical investments using some federal grant funds that were sort of over reflection of the needs that we anticipated. And so the those grant funds were dedicated towards, uh, keeping class size down, uh, towards providing, making sure we had a a range of supports in place for students. I think what we're especially seeing is that students, you know, have, um, uh, both, everybody's kind of aware of the academic needs of our students and we always wanna support their academic needs. But on the social emotional side, we we know that we need to continue to make some critical investments there. So so kind of globally, that's that's one of, you know, my, uh, I guess worries or concerns as we as we try to shape that twenty three budget. And then, I guess, uh, the the next thing to turn to is just the sort of the natural increases that we can anticipate through the, not only the contractual negotiations, which which we're in the middle of with all bargaining units, but also just the the basic contractual obligations. And so even if even if we had a settled contract, uh, we'd be, you know, looking at some some natural obligations that we have to, uh, that we have to make sure are in place. And so I think, you know, even even, you know, when we think about very modest or even, uh, uh, cost of living increases, um, our 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 obligations are 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 significant and it it seems that it's gonna be tight to kind of work inside the, uh, the one seven five that that the select board has identified. But but we also understand the fiscal position of the town and and kind of recognize the need to kind of work collaboratively. I think Jen has laid it out, you know, laid out the all the budget variables really effectively in a in a way that's helpful to us. Um, and so I think those are some of the things that are on my mind is is how can we meet our contractual obligations to employees and how can we meet, uh, the the needs that we know kids still have um, inside of the inside of the fiscal limits that that we're all that we're all challenged by. So, um, and Tom, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add in terms of the the challenges that we're we're up against.
Marty, you hit him on the head. You got him covered in forest. Thank you.
Uh, Gianna?
Thank you, Mark. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, and Jen, I, it's nice to meet you. I'm Gianna. Um, thank you so much for all of, you know, everything that you laid out. I echo what everybody else was saying. Um, I especially appreciate the, uh, the goals and the action items because you you know, numbers isn't my language, but the way you laid out the goals and the, you know, in that language, I I really especially appreciate that. Um, Jen, I did have one question on, I have the hard copy of the slides. And on mine, um, the FY twenty three financial summary, it says, it says the budget gap is four hundred K to seven hundred and eighty K. And the one on the screen, I thought, said a hundred and eighteen.
Yep. So I'm just. The one on the screen is correct. The last, the, um, I believe Mike might have sent out one, uh, this afternoon with some updated projections.
Okay, so the gap is one hundred and eighteen K.
Mm-hmm. Between one hundred and eighteen and five hundred and fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Shut up.
Yeah, Jen, um, I have a question. On on page eight, it talks about planning and it talks about thirty three thousand dollars. Um, and I just wondered, I know at the last special town meeting, we approved a hundred thousand dollars for planning uh, for construction that we might get funded on Long Meadow Street. So is that in a different place or?
Um, I believe it's something else. I'm just digging for my capital plan right now. Um, I think, Lynn, do you have, um, that was a hundred five thousand we wanted for additional planning, um, which that you wanted to land to do? Do you have a specific set of capital plan?
Um, I I just wanna clarify your question. Are you asking about the capital plan or are you asking about the hundred thousand for planning work for Long Meadow Street improvements?
Oh, well, I guess I just wonder where that hundred thousand showed up in this budget here. Where would that show up in this?
That would not, that would not show up in the budget. That was a, that was the fall town meeting. That was a, um, uh, funded out of free cash.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. Thank you. I, uh, the other thing is that, uh, you did a nice job of pointing out that when we reach the sort of the end of the road and get to two point five percent that limit and you mentioned being one point, uh, seven, eight million dollars, um, short, um, that that would happen every year. I mean, so that would just be the first year. But then the next year, we'd also be over a million dollars short. And the next year after that, a million dollars short and so forth, right? So, um.
That's if we didn't see any any growth in our in town's value. So so, um, that, if we see a one percent growth, that'll increase, so we might be able to get between five hundred to six hundred thousand in levy capacity if we see about a percent growth.
Yeah, so.
Anything, I mean, just like, um, Mark Gold just said, we're looking at eight and ten percent for one year during COVID. But on the other side, it could, you know, something could happen and and rates fall. So we'd like to, we like to be pretty conservative with our val- with our values at one percent.
Yeah, and 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 so so that new growth is really kind of essential. And the, um, you know, other towns in the state that have budgets that are much higher than ours are are not having the same difficulty because home prices are so much higher. Um, so, you know, whatever the town can do to increase, um, the way people look at our town and and we've done a good job with our budgets and I know that's always helpful um, for people who know that, um, you know, we do our best to to have a good budget every year. Uh, thanks for your presentation. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin or Armand? You guys have questions?
Yeah, Mark, if you don't mind, I just wanted to follow up on the on the what Marty and Tom said. Um, so, yeah, I just, I wanted to give folks, uh, an idea of the things that that we often talk about in the school committee with respect to the budget. Um, and again, we welcome continued conversation and collaboration on this if the select board and or the finance committee want to talk further. Just a couple of things that I know we've we've talked about recently is, um, you know, with Marty and Tom's guidance, we've worked really hard to come in under budget every year. And over the past five years, we've turned back a total of one point five million to the town. Um, and I think it's important for people to recognize that the the schools have worked really hard to do that and to work within our budget. And then the other thing, just to to keep in mind, as we think about negotiations and salaries and and how things work on the school side, uh, because in the contract, there's a bunch of lane and step increases, even if we had a zero percent cost of living, which there's no way that's gonna happen. But if there was a zero percent cost of living increase, our salaries would still go up four hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of lane and step increases. Um, and just so that folks know, the last two years, we've had a one point five percent cost of living increase in the contract, and so that's increased our budget by nine hundred thousand dollars. Again, just to give folks an idea of what it looks like in terms of our budget. Um, and then the the other things, I I just had one more comment and then a question. Um, is the the comment relates to one of the the priorities that that Jen laid out, which is working with the Mass School Building Authority, the MSBA. Um, and and we've been working really hard over the last several years to put in competitive applications for the middle schools. And I know this is one of Marty's top priorities and and we feel like we're getting some traction this year. So we will continue to update everybody on how that goes. And, you know, I think some of you on this have even gotten a a note from Marty today about how there's a meeting coming up shortly with the MSBA. And so I, we're, we're really working hard to try to achieve that budget goal. And I wanna make sure people know about that. And my question, um, Jen, is just, can you give us an idea of the the debt service numbers? Are there things coming off of that in the near future? I just, I don't have a good handle as to when things will come off the the debt service number. Thank you.
Sure. Um, the sweet spot for the town to keep the rates pretty stable is FY twenty six. So that information has been, uh, sent to Tom and Marty already in, you know, compilation with looking at the middle school projects, project. Um, and we'd like to, I personally don't wanna put anything more, you know, given a twenty five percent increase in debt from FY seventeen and also that is the major, one of the major factors that the, um, rating agencies look at, we have, and our auditor, we have a very high, um, debt to revenue expense that basically dings us, a- as they say. So, um, there are things coming off in FY twenty six and that would be kind of the sweet spot. So, you know, any plans or any architect and engineering stud, any studies, anything like that? Um, you know, they take a few years, so, um, we'll wanna get those going for any project, um, if we wanna, um, sell debt or, um, keep our debt service stable at, um, through FY twenty six.
Armin, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. First, um, Jen, I'm looking at the the CPC application list that was submitted and was forwarded to me from, uh, Steve. And there is a bunch of town items on that. Are all those included in the two million dollar capital list that you were talking about as well? Or are these potentially yes or no in that list?
Um, the two million is the capital budget. Um, those were, I believe, included in the six million nets for capital request.
Okay, so the six million capital requests, uh, in what we have a two million dollar budget. So, okay, so nothing has been prioritized yet. And these may not be at the top of that capital planning list. Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, yeah, I I I, Kevin, I think that, you know, I think, and and what you're just saying, Lynn, is what we were discussing for for a while about the debt service, that even if we do get approved for the MSN, the MSBA, uh, it's still gonna be a two to three year process by the time it's done. And so that kind of matches perfectly up with the debt service, uh, a- as Paul had predicted, I think, in the past as well. So I think people should just understand that it's not a proven pay and that people, but we aren't taking a look at the the budget long term for it. So, thanks for that information.
Hey, Armin, just so there's no confusion, I think the li- the list from, uh, Steve Weiss is community preservation, not capital planning.
No, I understand that, but in the budget presentation, um, Jen was was saying that there was, I I I think they would, what we're saying is that we're looking to CPC to pick up some of the town side projects or school side projects that may be funded by CPC in place of being funded by capital, uh, planning.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Uh, Jen, am I mischaracterizing that?
No.
Okay. So I was just trying to find, like Mark is saying, you know, does it make sense to spend two million dollars if we can get, you know, X amount from CPC and hold off on some projects? Is that an easier route to to balancing a budget versus, uh, making some kind of drastic cuts at any time, especially when it's harder to attract good good employees? So, okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Josh, I think you had your hand up next.
Uh, Jeff, my first, uh, budget process, I appreciate all the work you did on this. I think it's very helpful and presented a useful way. Uh, my question was on, uh, the last page of the goals and a listed solar leasing, uh, under alternative power. Is there, uh, is there any idea how that would factor in or is that too, uh, purely hypothetical at this point?
Um, I wouldn't say it's hypothetical. Lynn, if you wanna go into that a little bit more.
We're exploring. It's a possible revenue source if we were able to put a package together, uh, but it's it's just conceptual at this point.
Or is that, uh, is that down at the meadows or is that on top of built, like DPW or?
Uh, it could be the old DPW site. It could be on top of that town and school owned roofs. Uh, we would need to really take a look at what the, um, what the full packages the town could put together to make it financially advantageous for someone to come and 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 do. Um, and then the larger, uh, footprint that we offer, the more revenue we could generate from it. Um, but really, that slide is just speaking to the, uh, possible other revenue sources that, you know, that's one of the solutions that can keep us, uh, falling, from falling off that cliff and generating new types of revenue is one of those ways and alternative energy could be one of those options.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mark?
Thank you, uh, I ju- I just wanna make a point for people who may be going through this for the first time. Um, you know, on an early, you know, what I'll call December review of our bu- upcoming year budget, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar gap is probably the smallest we've had in ten years. Uh, so don't anybody panic that what's going on, there's a lot of changes between now and then. I mean, it can go both ways, but we've had much, much bigger, uh, issues going going into it. So, uh, I I, you know, I think we need to be prag- pragmatic and not necessarily pessimistic at at Jennifer's presentation.
Anyone else with questions or comments? So I I did see, did I see an an ARPA teaser in there about combining buildings?
Just a teaser.
Tough hanger. So if if, uh, we don't have any other questions or comments for for Jennifer, I we could probably, um, we can probably wrap up at this point. Yeah. Thank you, Jennifer. Now, do you, Armin and Kevin, you guys need to, uh, make motions to to adjourn your meetings or?
Yeah, uh, is there a motion?
I move the finance committee adjourns the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, this requires a roll call. Uh, I'm going through everybody, uh, Tom?
Uh, yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Maury? Maury? Yeah, I mean, Maury. Oh, I'd say, Armin, yes. And Andrew has adjourned. Over to you, Kevin.
I would welcome a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the.
Suzie, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the December sixth, twenty twenty one school committee meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, let's go around. Uh, Gianna?
Yeah.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes. And yes for me. School committee meeting is adjourned.
Before anybody leaves, I just want to make a comment that there's a, a meeting of the tax, tax ceiling task force. It's appropriate to date that today on Wednesday evening. It's been posted. It's at the Long Island High School and there's a Zoom link. Anybody's invited to attend.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone. You guys and girls. See ya.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, next up is, is Chief Dearborn?
He is not here yet. I think we're expecting him at seven, but I can see if he's available to hop on earlier.
Okay, I can go through the announcements and then if he's around, we can bump him in. Just a couple of select board announcements tonight. Asplin Tree, which is a contractor for EverSource, is going to be conducting tree trimming in town beginning of the week of December sixth, beginning today. Uh, the work is, uh, is a planned maintenance activity for vegetation management along certain corridors of overhead electric distribution lines. Tree trimming is routinely performed by the utility to help ensure public safety and reliable electric service. Work is planned along the following roads. Laurel Street from Laurel Lane to William Street. William Street from Laurel to Grassy Gutter. Merryweather Drive, Kenmore Drive. Wolf Swamp Road and Shaker Road from Mill Road to Eastland Road. For, for, for further information, you can check out eversource.com. We also have a live virtual design public hearing coming up. Be hosted by Mass DOT to present the design of the proposed Blueberry Hill Elementary School improvements, which was, um, which is a safe routes to school project. Uh, the hearing will take place from six to seven PM tomorrow night, Tuesday, December seventh. Purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to become fully acquainted with the proposed Blueberry Hill Elementary School improvements. All views and comments submitted in response to the hearing will be reviewed and considered to the maximum extent possible. For more information on the hearing and proposal, please visit the news flash on the town website. Can we have Chief Dearborn with us now? Hey, Chief.
Good evening.
It's all you, Chief, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you guys for having me. I'm glad the Patriots being on. I'll try to make this as quick as possible. On December first, we said, uh, we sent out an update on the fire. That's the bulk of the information I have, but I, I did ask Mike to, um, load up some photos. I can show you some timeline stuff. Investigation on the fire is still open. I would hope to, um, have a more information on the outcome of the investigation. It could be a month, it could be two weeks. Um, there, there's some more engineering review that's going on relative to the electrical system. But what we have now is, uh, the origin of the fire was the attic space above the bottle shop. The attic space for the bottle shop in Armadas is a common wide open area. We have a ton of video evidence from both inside Armadas, exterior Armadas, and, uh, um, the mobile station across the street and miles and miles of cell phone, uh, video. That also with dash cam video. So Mike's going to share you photo one, Mike, if you could. All right, it should be up right now if everyone can see that. I can't, but. Not seeing it, Mike. Oh. What are you, are you seeing anything on there? It's your Google browser, and I see the images at the bottom of the screen, but they're not popped up. Okay. God, my God, I highlighted my presentation.
How about now?
Okay. Great. So this is a video from the, um, the mobile station across the street. If you look at your upper right hand corner, um, that's our modest block. The peak roof is the front of Armadas. You'll see smoke coming out of the top of the bottle shop. It's kind of a narrow plume of smoke. So this is about seventeen minutes before the first nine one one call. So what we get from this is the fire was burning for an extended period of time, uh, went unnoticed. The mobile station, uh, video is motion censored. So if you see the car in the right hand corner, that's actually the employee from the mobile station that, uh, when he arrived to work, he kicked the camera. And this is the first images we have. It's hard to see in this picture, but we have some other video from Armadas that shows smoke coming from the peak of Armadas at this point also. Any questions on this video before we move on or image?
Do we know what time that was, Chief?
And, you know, Mark, I didn't write all the times down. It, it's, it's the first nine one one call was at six eighteen. So mine is, it's going to be around six oh seven, something like that. Thanks. Now, I'll tell you, one of the things we're struggling with right now is all these, all these different cameras we looked at and we have some folks work on this, is actually lining up all the images. All the times are off. Some didn't do daylight savings time. Some are just on their own clocks. Then we've, actually, our goal is to line them all up with the nine one one calls. So, um, in all the radio transmissions, we're still working on it. So. I would have thought that would have been easier to do, but it's really not. So this is actually, if you see, uh, the employee from the mobile, you see his jeans on the island, past the pumps there. And this is actually simultaneous, closest we can match the first nine one one call. This point, we received, um, two simultaneous nine one one calls. One from the, um, worker at the mobile station. The second call comes from the hair salon. The hair salon, a, um, a resident who we've identified was walking, um, westbound on Maple Street, noticed the fire in the back of the building. Went to the door of the hair salon because she saw the lights around in there. They had a customer at the time, the stylist and the customer. He was actually coloring her hair. He had no idea anything was going on. He calls nine one one, says, somebody just said our building's on fire, but I'm going to go check the dumpsters in the back. He basically sets the phone down, goes to the back of the building, realizes that the back of the building is on fire, the back roof of the building, reports that. Cut the employee from the, um, uh, mobile station, um, is, is saying the building is on fire. However, he doesn't know where the fire is. And that's actually a lengthy nine one one call. They're trying to ascertain. Finally says the liquor store, liquor store. And our first, uh, so as they're typing his information, it gives us what they call a pre alert. Lynn's actually seen this on our, on our, our phones. It pings all of our phones. Says a fire response and it gives the location of the caller. The first call we actually pinged for location is actually the mobile station. So does that start the response sequence? So you can see that. And Mike, if you wanted the video or image three? So that's, so that's after the first nine one one call, five minutes and ten seconds. That's the fire truck actually pulling into the first driveway of the Armada store. Police cruiser on scene, police cruiser was a minute thirty seconds before us. We have, um, dash cam video from the cruiser. He actually also was traveling west on Maple or behind the store. His dash cam video shows the full, the back of the store fully involved in the roof collapse. And that was on our arrival. So. So been through all the tapes, everything, dispatch was prompt and accurate. Response times were well within our parameters. Uh, police response is well within their parameters. We didn't have any, any issues as far as water or anything. We used the law metal system along with, along with the infield. Water system, we had plenty of water at the height of the, um, fire, we were flowing, um, close to eight thousand gallons a minute. The biggest disadvantage here was this fire was so far advanced on our arrival. The building did not, not have adequate alarms or sprinkler system. This building, we've, we pre-planned buildings. I don't know if anyone's heard that term before, but we actually visit, you know, uh, uh, buildings on blue sky days, all of our major commercial structures in town. And we developed tactics based on fire scenarios based on, on, on these buildings. We always knew that this block was a challenge because of its construction, its age, its lack of protection, the lack of alarming. It was not required to have alarms or sprinklers due to its age. It was grandfathered. Even though over the years, we've suggested it multiple times. You know, the owners, it's their decision. There's no way to force a code issue like that. So, um, we had tactical plans developed for this. Of course, our tactical plans, to try and contain a fire like this, uh, the fire was not this far advanced. So we implemented what we call a defend, defensive strategy. And really, it's to contain this fire to this single building. We did know a few things about this building. We knew there, there was a fire stop. And it was really not a traditional well-defined fire stop. We knew it was an area of the salon. And I'll give kudos to the Eastlaw Meadow Chief. He was assigned that task. Was able to get some lines in the back door, shoot up into the ceiling. Also concentrated the bigger, bigger guns from a ladder pipe and another one to actually keep that fire stop intact. And the fire did not advance beyond that. So, um, I want to, I want to thank all of our mutual aid partners. They were outstanding, very professional. You know, this is certainly not something we see every day, and I hope I don't see it ever again in my career. But, um, you know, overall, the, the operation went well. We only had one injury. One of our firefighters broke his hand, um, trying to move a, a hand line away from a collapse. We had a real close call. We had two firefighters that just missed, um, the front of Armadas that big. Uh, where the sign was came down all in one piece and basically shot across the parking lot. Narrowly missing two firefighters, but, um, fortunately, they were young and quick on their feet and they got out of the way. And, um, and we got out of the day unscathed. So I'll answer any questions for you if you have them.
Josh, you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions, Chief. And again, thank you for all the, all the hard work you've done on this and keeping the town informed on what happened. My first question, was it worse because it, it was a liquor store, uh, involved?
Yeah. So that's a million dollar question. Actually, that was a theory I was running with early on it. So at the height of the investigation, I had about thirty five fire investigators here. People that, you know, this is what they do. All the private insurance investigators, of folks from the ATF. And I, and I asked that question. And they said, it will contribute to a certain extent, but not as much as you would think. Because most of the alcohol, the average alcohol content of stuff in a liquor store is, you know, five to eight percent. Obviously, some of your higher test stuff is going to do different things. I will tell you that all over the parking lot, we had the tops of bottles that had heated and expanded and blown off. I had two of my folks that were on a ground gun, uh, right in front of, of a big hose shooting into the store. And with their mask on, they had tops of bottles actually bouncing out their face pieces, you know, off the front of them. They didn't know what it was until once things calmed down. There, there's hundreds of them all over the parking lot. So I, I can say it contributed to a certain extent, but not as much as you would think, if that answers it.
Sure. Um, and, and my, I, I know you said that, uh, obviously, none of us would ever want to see this again. Is, are there other buildings that are similarly, uh, have, don't, are not up to standards in town that, that you also worry about?
There's a bunch of buildings I worry about. Um, this, this was probably one of the ones I worried about the most. I played this fire through, through my head a hundred times. We actually went back to the two thousand thirteen, uh, pre-plants for this building. There's actually pictures of me with my head up in the attic, um, you know, surveying this building. So. But we do have other ones. Uh, there's some town owned buildings, but most of our other buildings, um, think of two that I worry about, um, that even our town buildings are, are alarmed in some fashion, which gives us a, a significant head start. But there's one very close to that building, uh, in the same neighborhood that isn't, it, it has very little protection to it, um, which I would worry about. Not to say, not, not as big, though.
So it sounds like if people are listening, if you can alarm, at least it gives, uh, it gives the fire department a, a fighting chance at least.
Yeah. And, and we're going to springboard off of this. I mean, so this, this building was, was subject to annual inspections. My fire inspector was out there. We have the inspection reports. We kind of know. You know, there's some common issues with this building that are common with older buildings. Use of extension cords because, you know, their power supply doesn't support their operations. It was a common theme. And every time we go out, we use that as an opportunity, like, listen, you know, you got, you know, this is a, this is a multi-million dollar loss here, you know, for that lower investment. And you'll get a break on your insurance. Put some alarms in this place, you know? And we're certainly going to springboard off this. And don't let this happen to you. Had the conversation Friday about that, so.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Chief, for everything.
My pleasure. Thank you guys for taking the time. Um, like I said, I, I don't know when the final report's going to come out on it, but we'll certainly put that in a packet for you. Good night.
So we want to, um, our classification hearing isn't for another twenty five minutes. Do we want to, uh, keep on going with resident comments and then select board comments? And then the town managers report if you have time for that? Do we have any town residents, uh, looking to make a comment?
Not seeing anyone there. I mean, there's names there, but I don't see, oh, we have one. Mike, are you moving them in?
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, are you there?
There, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Hey, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the select board for allowing me to, uh, read a brief statement. Good evening. My name is Bryant Miller. I live at ninety one Leewood Drive, which is on the corner of Hazville Road. And I'm here tonight to talk about why the industrial gas facility and pipeline proposed for a law metal residential neighborhood is potentially dangerous project. As a longtime law metal resident, I feel very strongly about the safety of our community. After watching the recorded November fifteenth law metal select board meeting with EverSource representatives, I felt uneasy about the answers given by EverSource. This unnecessary high pressure gas line has the potential to cause a catastrophic event in a highly populated area, including an elementary school. One of the major risk factors brought up by Mark Gonzalez, general manager of the gas operations, is flooding. He mentioned a significant incident in New York where a steel gas main was ruptured or severed by excessive ground movement and erosion due to flooding. Everyone should know that there has been at least six water main breaks in Law Metal along the route of the proposed gas line over the past year, with the most recent being only ten days before that meeting and less than a hundred yards from the proposed industrial gas facility. As a resident who could be affected by this gas line, I became very worried when putting these facts together. I concluded that something that seems to happen too frequently in our town, a water main break, put my family and local school children at great risk. So I'll end by asking you tonight, are there any risks really worth taking for a redundant and a necessary high pressure pipeline? And, uh, I guess that's all I have to say for that.
Thank you, Bryant.
Yep.
Uh, any other resident comments?
I do not see any right now.
I do not see any right now.
Any select board comments? Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, yes, um, a couple of comments. First, um, as long as the pipeline was brought up, um. A, the whole thing about water main breaks, relatively news, new news to me and certainly given. What happened at Will Swamp Road, something that I think that, you know, hopefully that since EverSource mentioned this as an issue, I hope they really take. Uh, notice of that. But I wanted to point out, I want, I do want the community to understand. That whenever Source was asked on repeated occasions on the open houses and in our meeting, about what are they gonna do about transitioning? You know, the transition that's supposed to happen due to state law. You know, we're supposed to be fifty percent reduction in greenhouse gases by two thousand thirty and, you know, good by tw- uh, twenty fifty. And they kept on saying, well, it's all gonna go to this state twenty-eighty hearing. They're gonna take care of it all. It'll all be done for them. That's, it's happening over there. Don't worry about it. I, I want the community to know what the twenty-eighty hearing is. What it is, it's a, a um. Document put together by the DPU that requested the Attorney General. To study what will have to get the transition, how to get off of natural gas. This committee, this commission, the study is being run by the natural gas companies. There are four of them, uh, Util, uh, Util Core, Berkshire Gas, National Grid and EverSource. They are the ones who are putting together the report about how to get off of natural gas. So they're what, it's, this is, as far as I'm concerned, this is pretty much, uh, you know, the, uh, the wolf is guarding the hen ass. This is, um. So they're the ones that are gonna put the report together. And so when they say, EverSource says, oh, the whole thing with the law and to all be taken care of with twenty-eighty. What they're saying is, yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna take care of it. We, the gas utilities are taking care of it, so. I'm not sure that it was clear to the community who's running this, uh, study. It's being run by the gas companies and I think that's very important. Um, another select board comment, different subject altogether. Uh, I believe with the new adult center, that if you are a community organization and wanna use the adult center. Um, you're being charged. You're gonna be charged to use this as a long metal community organization and I. That doesn't, something doesn't sound right to me about that. I understand if you're gonna be there after hours, you got custodial fees, that's one thing. But up and above those, if you're gonna be charged as an organization, a long metal organization, to use the facility, you're gonna be charged up and above that. That, that doesn't sound right to me and I, I wish that, uh, that would be looked into and addressed because you're out of town fine. But given the cost of this facility and all of us as taxpayers are paying it, that if you're a community organization, wanna use this building to have a meeting. You should not be charged extra for that and I, I hope that will be looked into. Thanks.
Thank you. Josh, did you have a comment?
Uh, sure. I saw signs uh, out in the town about the um. Cutting down your cardboard and I know that we're getting towards that season where there's gonna be a lot of cardboard put out. And I, I was wondering if we were, um, if we knew, uh, if the staffing problem with the. Waste management has been resolved, uh, and if, problem, I know we keep missing days, if it's, if it's still a problem with. Staffing or if we're into improper breakdown. And uh, I, I know I drive around and I see boxes that aren't properly broken down. And uh, I was wondering if we knew what was happening on that, uh, if. If houses are being skipped or if they're spending an inordinate amount of time breaking down boxes. Uh, and if that's the case, I'd just urge everyone in town to please abide by, uh, the. By the request to cut down, break it down into three feet or less, um, because especially this time of year. The boxes are really gonna pile up. It's gonna be really tough for waste management to get this taken care of. And uh, uh, just want everyone to be a good citizen and to, to help us out and to help out the, the hard workers this time of year.
Is that a question for Lynn?
Well, uh, it started off as one and then I said, well, I guess, then I just kept talking. Um, so if Lynn wants to answer that, or she knows, but I think what I said, uh. Regardless, people need to cut down their boxes and, uh, help out the, the folks that are picking up.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, build on what Steve Marantz was saying about. Different organizations in the community having a space to meet that they wouldn't be charged, um. You know, some of the organizations I know we're referring to are organizations that the town calls on, on a regular basis. To submit, uh, members of those organizations to serve the town. Uh, a lot of folks from these grassroots organizations. Um, I don't know if they're grassroots in a sense, but you know, but from these, um. Not-for-profit sort of groups that get together. Um, you know, they provide leadership to the town also, people who graduate from those groups. To town committees and so forth and, um, and there's a lot of different. Possibilities in the future that could be developed and, and it would be cross-prohibited. Prohibited for people if they had to pay a, a fee for every time they met. Um, I know that it's been, uh, for years, people have been able to meet in spaces that they didn't have to pay. And I guess I would just again, support the idea that there ought to be some space. In the community where, you know, groups that have, have met some sort of muster, you know, could, could meet. Um, and not be charged a, a, a monthly fee, uh, for that purpose, so. You know, I know, I think it's just something we have to try to sort out. I know with the, with the new adult center. It may be hard at this point for something like that to happen, as I know with the school. Anytime you use part of the school, you have to pay a fee also. But I, I guess I would look for some building that would be possible, um, to continue this. You know, no cost or, or minimal cost to some organizations that really do make contributions to the town. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark.
I, I just, I wasn't gonna weigh in on this, but I think we need to differentiate between a town organization. You know, a task force of something chartered by this, the town manager or the select board. Versus a group of private town individuals who are in a, who are in a group and, and, you know, we're. We're incurring costs to keep the building open and I, you know, I'm reluctant to try to, you know, state who these. Organizations are, but they can be everything from a knitting club to, to a book, book review club or something like that, that. You know, there, there's some question about whether we wanna make these available to what I'll call non-town related groups, so I. I just encourage that we be careful of how we open this up because we could end up being. Inundated with expenses to operate a building based on, or a bunch of organizations. There must be dozens and dozens. Hundreds of organizations in town.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lynn.
Uh, thanks, Mark. Um, I wasn't going to wade into this right now because it's select board comment. What I would suggest is we, um, if the chair is so willing to add this as an agenda topic for a future meeting. And I can give you a full briefing, including the, uh, facility rental request forms that have been. Uh, uh, prepared for the new adult center and then give you a, an, uh, summary of. What we're talking about in terms of Greenwood Center, uh, and, um. At some point down the line, the community house again, we, community house is not available for rentals at the moment. Due to, uh, the lack of custodial staffing. So I can be, uh, ready as early as your next meeting to go into much greater detail on this and actually have it as an agenda topic.
Great. Thank you. Any other select board comments? Okay, you think we can sneak in your town manager's report before seven-thirty?
I hope so. Alright, uh, so my report was prepared Thursday afternoon when, uh, the agenda gets published, so my COVID update is. Normally not too far off, um, however, in this case, it is off. At the time, um, of publication on Thursday, we had thirty-one cases. As of about four hours ago, we have fifty-one cases. So this was a spike that we were anticipating as a result of the holiday. Um, we, uh, we started seeing that spike a little bit earlier, so some of it is, is just, you know, people, uh. Breakthrough cases, I think we have about sixty percent breakthrough cases at this time. Um, as we've had a five to eleven-year-old COVID vaccination clinic in Wilberham on November twenty-first. A hundred and fifty-nine vaccines were given out at that clinic. It was the first, uh, of a type. In, for the Eastern Hamden Shared Public Health Services, which as a reminder is Munson, Hamden and Wilberham and Long Meadow. It was open to all five to, five to eleven-year-olds from Long Meadow, Wilberham, Hamden and Munson, and they have more clinics in the works December. Um, and I'll give you a brief update on the Maple Center Shopping Plaza Fire. I will not go into the detail that Chief Dearborn did, but I will. Um, just elaborate on, um, the Community Relief Fund that's being set up. More, a, a press release has been prepared and that should be able to go out sometime this week. Working with the East of the River Five Town Chamber and People's Bank. And consolidating with the fundraising effort created by, um. The Center Square Grill and some other residents in East Long Meadow. Uh, we have created a community relief fund that will be managed by the East of the River Chamber. And, uh, People's Bank will be the, uh, holding, um, uh, financial institution for that. We will provide all the details on how you can make a donation if you want to, uh, in that press release, which again, I'm hoping to have ready by the end of this week. A couple of weeks ago, we held an auction on town surplus items. This was managed by the town's procurement manager, Chad Thompson. And notice that the auction was shared via social media and email to all town employees. The auction was held using GovDeals, which is a nationwide, um, eBay-type outfit. Uh, in total, thirty items were sold, yielding eighty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents for the town. The Pondside Road Flap Project is substantially complete and the road has reopened. They have some guardrail work to finish up. GFOA Awards, the town of Long Meadow was awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for the July twenty-twenty-one budget. Uh, a ton of credit for this is owed to Paul Pesterzick, Jason Ducharme and Alicia Gunsals. For all their efforts to prepare the GFOA budget document. Additionally, the town's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Has met the requirements to be awarded the GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. Uh, the, an SMRP grant award, the town was awarded a sustainable materials recovery program municipal grant. From the Mass Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. To enhance the performance of the municipality's waste reduction programs. Um, the re- recycling dividends program provides payments to municipalities that have implemented specific programs and policies. Proven to maximize reuse, recycling and waste reduction. We are scored, um, based on a, a criteria that they've developed. The maximum grant award we'd be eligible for is twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, so we did pretty well. Uh, in other grant news, we received a Meta Ten Grant Award in the FY twenty-one Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Program. This is through Mass Department of Energy Resources for a retrocommissioning proposal for Center School. This, uh, grant awards fifty thousand dollars and will hire a third-party municipal energy consultant to complete a retrocommissioning study of Center Elementary. Uh, the elementary school has been our, one of our top energy users, uh, in all of our reporting that we do annually, so we're. Hoping that this will yield some good results that will see, uh, a favorable decrease in energy use. Uh, blend tennis courts, the park board reviewed the idea of keeping some of the blend tennis courts open during the winter months as was done last year. Uh, the decision was made to try again this year. A few nets will remain up. Courts can only be used if there's no snow on them. Residents cannot shovel the courts or put any de-icer down. The adult center, the attendance is back up almost to what it was pre-pandemic. Some days it's at that or exceeding it, depending on what they have programming that day. A permanent full-time administrative assistant was hired and he started on November fifteenth. His name is Tom Gerwick and he is a resident of Long Meadow. Uh, we also have three temporary people helping out right now. One is filling a temporary vacancy while the other, um. Are providing extra admin help while the center sees this increase in people coming back through the door. The position of program assistants will help with nighttime coverage. Those positions should be advertised very soon. With the goal of adding nighttime and Saturday hours in January. Electronic voting at town meeting, the electronic voting task force has continued to meet. Demo clickers were provided by Meridia for trial at various boarding committee meetings, as well as PTO meetings and other gatherings over the next few months. I have tentatively reserved a spot in the ARPA prioritization list for, to fund the purchase of the clickers. And a demo is going to be set up for upcoming select board meeting. And this did not make it onto my printed list, but I did wanna make sure I noted this here. Uh, a local Long Meadow Boy Scout troop reached out late, uh, Friday and asked. If they could assist in some cleanup efforts along Forest Glen, which they did on Sunday. They picked up a couple hundred pounds of trash, a, a tire and a metal ladder. So a big thank you to them for assisting in that cleanup. And that is all that I had in my report tonight.
That's great. Uh, any questions?
Uh, thanks, I may, may have wanted to include some of the, some select board comments, but it ties into Lynn's comment about. Meta Ten Grant and Center School. I, as part of the, because I'm the representative to the building committee. Uh, the, the building committee toured Center School and they would like to have some comments. Uh, and some input into the significant capital planning request for windows in Center School. They think there's a. Better way. They have some folks with expertise in, in the windows and I will tell you from my perspective and my. Experience working in the window industry for the last thirty-five years, there's, for thirty-five years or so. You know, the windows are, are, are broken to the extent they don't operate, but fu- but oper- but functionally. There's no rot, there's no broken panes, there's, you know, they have functioning, uh. Uh, uh, storm windows as part of them and before we spend two-point-one million dollars. We may wanna bring in some people who, uh, can do things. The, the biggest complaint is they can't open the windows. That's because they're old windows with sashes and, and weights and the weights have all fallen off of them, apparently, and we need somebody to open them up and. Repair the sashes and make it so the windows can open. I mean, you really have to struggle. So the windows don't operate. But unlike when they were replaced or other windows were replaced, they're not rotting, there's not wind pouring through the windows. They just can't open them and so before we do anything with spending the town's money or even a, a grant on, on Center School windows. I think we oughta give those, the building committee who's been put together for just such a thing to take a closer review of, of this.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Tom.
Yeah, Lynn, I just, when I look at the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, um, and the grants we received. You know, I think we would save a lot of weight in our, um, in terms of our garbage. Um, if we could, if people could take plant, you know, like when you husk corn or, you know, chop up. Vegetables and you have all this extra stuff, if, if people should be recycling that and is there any way a grant like this would cover? Um, you know, giving people, you know, either free or low-cost recycling waste bins, you know, just for, uh. You know, garden scraps or, or, you know, food scraps that are non, non-meat, of course, you know, um.
Yeah, I believe this topic came up at the Energy Sustainability Committee meeting last week. They're working on an effort with businesses. But in regards to residential composting or, um, uh, organic, um, disposal. If, um, if curbside's the only option that these residents are using, then, then no, we would not have a curbside composting program. Available to us, um, but they, we could potentially look at something for the transfer or the recycling center. But that would require them to bring it, the material there.
Yeah, so what about people just composting in their yard? You know, there's a lot of people who do that already and then they. Eventually harvest that compost and put in their garden. Um, is that something that's being discussed at all?
Um, I'm not sure if it's being discussed actively right now. I do believe over the years it has been, but it's something we could certainly renew. The conversation on.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I think it, I know I, I do it and I, 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 I know it. It's amazing how much stuff that I end up with, you know, a couple of buckets, three buckets a week if, of, you know, just. Com- compostable scrap from my cooking, so, um, it'd be great if people could have access to that. And maybe they would do it if there was low cost, you know, or free. I know we managed to get a grant to give everyone. Small garbage cans, but maybe there'd be a grant to give people a nice big composter, put their yards somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys. So I think we're right at the, uh, seven-thirty or a little short of the seven-thirty mark for the tax classification hearing. We can take a deep breath for a couple of minutes.
Well, Mark, I'd just comment on, uh, when you were reading about the tree trimming that EverSource is gonna do. I, when I first saw that, I'm thinking, tree trimming, that's what people do with Christmas holiday parties. They trim the tree and. I'm thinking, why would EverSource be doing tree trimming? Glad you clarified that. Yeah. Because then they'd have to do it for Hanukkah bushes. It would only be fair.
Visual gives me so much joy, Tom.
We, we must be on the mark here.
I'm, I'll make a motion. We open the tax classification hearing.
I'll second that.
Uh, very good. So I, Jenny, you up first?
Yeah, um, just wanted to say thank you to, for the opportunity for the classification hearing. Um, this is uh, to set our tax rate and uh, determine the shift. And we have Ken Rogers from KRT Appraisals here. Who worked diligently on getting all these numbers together. Um, they have been, most have been approved by the DOR and this was kind of the last step to set our tax rate. So um, I will turn it over to Ken.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Ken.
Let me uh, just share my screen. Everybody see it?
Yes.
All right. So tonight's meeting, we just want to talk about the purpose of the tax classification hearing. Um, tax rate analysis for FY twenty-two. Uh, the recertification process. Uh, we'll look at new growth, a total taxable value. The tax levy and the tax rate and other classification considerations. Such as open space discount, the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. The purpose of the classification hearing is to determine the percentage share of the tax levy that each class of property will pay. Communities are allowed to shift the tax burden towards commercial, industrial and personal property taxpayers up to a maximum of a hundred and fifty percent. Voting for a residential factor of one will maintain a single tax rate. Voting for a residential factor less than one and down to a minimum of point nine six four seven. Which is a hundred and fifty percent shift will result in a split tax rate. The adopted residential factor is then used to determine the tax levy paid. By each class of property and calculate the resulting tax rates. Shifting tax rates onto the CIP class doesn't increase the amount of revenue collected. A detailed report of changes of value and impact of the split rate was sent to the select board prior to this meeting. And the cover to that is off to the left. And this has basically all the details for each um, scenario. So the last certification was completed in FY nineteen. The only difference between a certification year and an interim year is the auditing process by the Department of Revenue. The interim year is the same process for discovering new growth. By inspecting open building permits and also through the cyclical inspection program. All properties are valued on a mass appraisal system using market derived cost models. And the Department of Revenue must review and approve all the sales, property values and new growth. The FY twenty-two property values and new growth have been approved by the Department of Res- Revenue as of today. So the new growth period runs from July first of twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The total new growth for this year is ten million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. In property value or two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars of tax revenue. Again, the new growth is from the inspection of building permits and through a cyclical inspections over that same time period. The new growth is added to the tax levy calculation, which we'll review in a few slides. This slide illustrates the total percent change in each property class. Personal property shows the largest increase of thirty-two point one five percent. The reason for this change is in the past, their, the utility values um, were done by net book value. And that has changed to an appraised value. Um, so the majority of that change is in the utility class. The slide illustrates. One of the ways communities raise money is through property taxation, known as the tax levy. The tax levy is approximately seventy percent of all revenue for the town. The actual levy for FY twenty twenty-two is fifty-eight million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. The actual levy amount to be raised through property taxes. To calculate the tax rate, you must divide the levy into the total taxable valuation and multiply it by a thousand. Since the tax rate is expressed as per thousand of value. Again, all tax rates must be approved by the Department of Revenue. If a single tax rate is adopted, the tax rate will drop ten cents per thousand. Prior to the approval of the tax rate, each community must decide if all classes of property will share equally in raising taxes. According to their assessed value. Or if one class will pay a higher tax, which is known as a split rate, and consequently pay a greater share of the levy. The select board can choose to adopt a single tax rate for all property classes or split the rate by shifting anywhere. From one percent to fifty percent to the commercial, industrial, personal property class. With each one percent shift, there's about a two cent reduction in the residential tax rate and a twenty-five percent increase in the CIP. This tables to demonstrate the impact the shift would have on the CIP's share of the levy. Well, the one percent CIP share would increase approximately thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And the residential share would decrease by the same amount. With a ten percent increase. CIP would share, uh, excuse me, would increase three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the residential would decrease three hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. A single tax rate allows the property owners to pay the proportionate share of the tax levy based on the value of their property. Splitting the rate does not change the amount of property tax revenue that could be collected. It just redistributes the burden between classes of property. With a one percent shift, the average assessed residential tax bill would be seven dollars lower. While the average CIP tax bill would be three hundred and ninety-five dollars greater. With a fifty percent shift, the average residential tax bill will go down three hundred and forty dollars. While the average commercial tax bill will increase nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. The reason the increase is so drastic on the CIP is because the CIP values only account for six point five nine percent of the total valuation. While the residential value accounts for ninety-three point four, one percent of the total. There are three other classification considerations, the open space discount, the residential exemption and the small commercial exemption. The open space discount would not apply since there's no designated open space in Long Meadow. The residential exemption is typically used for communities with a high percentage of rental units or seasonal. And lastly, the small commercial exemption, which is typically used in towns with a split tax rate. Each business owner would have to qualify and the benefit would go to the property owner. So, in closing, it is important to note that the primary makeup of Long Meadow is residential, so a slight reduction. To the residential class would put a large increase or burden on the CIP classes. Shifting the burden does not change the amount to be raised. Typically, communities that have a CIP. Typically in communities that have a CIP greater than twenty percent benefit from the shift in the tax rate. So tonight, you'll be voting on which residential factor will be used and. I basically just gave you um, a spread from one to one fifty. And that uh, concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, anybody have any questions for Ken? Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a, a series of ques- questions for you, Ken, if I could. I, I thought I heard you say something, but I just want to clarify. How are the assessed values of residential properties determined again? You'd said something about m- market derived values. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. There, um, so basically there's a cost model that's developed. And it's tested against the sale properties. Until the, the statistics that are acceptable to the Department of Revenue are met. And then that model is applied to all the other residential properties, so sale and non-sale properties.
Hey, thank you. Does, does that mean that people might expect that a market value, I say that, you know, in terms of sales? How can that, how should that be related or might that be related to the assessed value then? You know, when people look in the paper and they, recognizing we're working on two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty data now. And this is two thousand twenty-one and lots changed with the market.
Right.
How can they look at market price versus assessed values? Or how can they look at that?
Well, with assessments, they typically lag about a year because your, your sale sample is a year back. So we're looking at, you know, twenty twenty sales for FY twenty-two.
Okay, then, and, and how do we do the same thing for commercial properties?
Well, commercial is a little bit different. Um, you know, normally we look at, you know, income and expenses. Um, we look at Marshall and Swift, which is a national costing service. Um, and that's basically where the base rates start from.
And, and, and the same question that I have for, for residential for a commercial is, so how does the. What I'll call the market value or the fierce expected sale value of commercial buildings. Look relative to the assessed value?
Should be the same.
Okay, so. I, I guess my, my concern and Ken, this, there's no question here, but comment, just. I pretty consistently believe that the Long Meadow, in Long Meadow, our commercial properties are, have been under-valued. I believe that because there have been no sales to, of commercial properties to, to test the, the model against. And so therefore, we're using, we've been using a model of revenue that, that appears to me and seems to me to be. Undervaluing our commercial properties. How can you assure me that that's not happening?
Well, we do look at commercials, you know, that are local. They may not be in Long Meadow. Um, you know, we're just comparing, I do a, a few other towns uh, near Long Meadow. I do uh, Hampden, I do Agawam. Um, and we're just kind of looking at the area. And seeing what they're doing. Are they going up? Are they coming down?
And, and what, what happened to the? We, we used to, I remember we used to say the, the average house in Long Meadow was three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar value, then it became three fifty-six. Do we know what that average value of the house is now and how it's changed over the last years of valuation?
Um. I mean, I can give you what the average is. For single family, Mark?
Yep. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
So the average assessed value for a single family for FY twenty-two is three hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
And, and, and it was three hundred and fifty-six thousand last year, so it's gone up eleven percent, something like that? Over ten percent? Have our commercial values gone up eleven percent in the same time?
No.
What have they gone up?
Uh, right now, they've gone up, they've basically status quo for us from twenty twenty-one to FY twenty-two.
Thank you for your answers. I'm done, Mark. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Steve Morantz.
Yes, a, a couple of questions in terms of, um, you mentioned the utility class has gone up. Can you explain a little more? Is this, is this, is this property of the, of the utility company, meaning EverSource?
Yes.
So. Right, so, um, as you can see, with EverSource, we'll say this is not fair and, and be in court for the next twenty years and only pay us half of what we assessed them for.
Well, the Department of Revenue is, uh, they made the change. So they moved off of the net book value to the, to an appraised value. Uh, so every community has to do this.
Okay. Uh, question in terms of where do, and, and it's not open space, but in terms of. Of the properties of Twin Hills and Long Meadow Country Club, where do they stand on our tax situation for the town?
Um, I don't really understand your question.
The, the property tax that, the, the two golf courses in town, Twin Hills and Long Meadow Country Club. It's a big hunk of land, which one has.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they must pay some sort of tax, I assume sort of reduced rate because it's recreational. I'm, I'm just.
I think one of them has a, a recreational discount. Uh, obviously they both pay taxes and. You know, they both pay personal property tax as well. I, I don't know if those amounts are offhand.
But, but they have a tax at a different rate than commercial and residential. Is that correct?
Uh, it's the same tax rate. They're just in a program for rec- one of them is definitely in a program for recreational use, which is a percent off.
Okay, and the last question on, on since Long Meadow Country Club has now leased. A couple acres more of their property for Tennessee Gas, is that going to be taxed at a different rate and should we, should they be prepared for that?
Um, I haven't seen. I, I haven't seen anything on that come through.
Okay, well, the, the, it, it all happened a couple of years ago. I mean, the money changed hands and Tennessee Gas is. That's, yeah. The question, are they paying more tax on that than Long Meadow Country Club did when it was part of their, their deal? Maybe someone should look into that for.
So, Steve, I, I can speak on that for, uh, potentially for a moment. Uh, I have some, uh, country club clients who on the. The golf course portion, there's, there's a sixty-one B classification. That's the uh, recreational use. And it's a lower tax rate. I, it, it, much lower than it would be commercial or residential. Um, and then generally if the use changes. Uh, and if it's not for a sale for a similar use, there's a rollback of taxes. Or uh, you have to pay, you pay up even to settle up. Um, so if it has been changed and if Long Meadow Country Club wasn't sixty-one B, we should definitely take a look at that. And make sure that that uh, classification is changing, at least on that parcel.
We, we'll take a look at that this week and verify all that information.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else for Ken? Yeah, Tom.
Oh, actually, I, no, I don't have any more questions for Ken. I, um, thank you. Nice report.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for a, a single tax rate for the town. Yeah, I'll make a motion for a a single tax rate for the town.
I was like, very, isn't it?
Is there more to it?
Oh, right, right, we need a public comments, right?
Okay. Oh, we, I'll make a comment then as a select board member, I I didn't have a question, but um, but the um, you know, I look at towns that had a a number of of businesses, especially residents, uh restaurants and and so forth. It it failed over the COVID, through the COVID period. And we were pretty successful in maintaining the restaurants that we have, which I I think it says one thing is the people in the community are um happy with the service they're getting at those restaurants, the food is being served and so forth. But it also, I think, has to something to do with the tax rate. You know, if if we had a split tax rate, uh, we might have lost some of those uh restaurants, you know, they they may have the the price of their rents would have gone up. Uh, I also think that, you know, we look at, you know, i- you look at Long Meadow Country Club, um, you know, I agree, we need to look into that one parcel that the uh EverSource has purchased uh for commercial use. But the uh, but it's a great resource, I mean, a lot of people take their children there sledding. Uh, it is a recreational uh asset to our town. And I know that the uh Twin Meadows Country Club also uh has a lot of people have functions there and uh everything from weddings to uh clothing sales and everything else. And and it's a great asset. And I I think if we had a s- uh tax rate, it created a heavy burden on the businesses in town. Uh, we see some of those things changing pretty rapidly. So that's why I'm still in support of a single tax rate.
Thank you. Yeah, Mark.
And I'm gonna give my annual speech of why I support a split tax rate and have for the last twelve years and continue to do so. Uh, and I think that that Ken's comments about how tax rates are s- are set and how they change over the last year supports my my supposition here. And that is that our property values for residential houses are being increased in la- in over year over year of over ten percent. Probably eleven, eleven and a half percent. But our commercial property values continue to remain flat. And I might comment that that same number of remaining flat has been in place for the last the last two years, maybe even longer than that. So, you know, my argument isn't that we need, we need to to punish the commercial properties. It's just that that our current process, which uses, which uses essentially leased properties to or lease uh values to generate property value in commercial, isn't working. We have no sales of properties in Long Meadow, commercial properties. And we're not reflecting the the increased value of our of properties in Long Meadow. There aren't a lot of vacancies in 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 commercial buildings in in the town of Long Meadow, and it's only getting worse because of the of the fire at our modest plaza. So I I think that the issue for me of supporting a split tax rate isn't to punish the 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 commercial properties, or rather to be able to reflect and and uh and account for the fact that our lack of sales has been is unable to maintain and keep up with the fact that that commercial property values have increased and their share of the overall mar- uh tax burden in town continues to decrease. And I can put the numbers together and I have done it, but over the last seven or eight years, their 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 percentage of tax taxes that they pay in town has continued to drop and over the next year at a single tax rate will drop further. And I think that that's an an undue burden to our residents. And so for that reason, I'm going to support a a split tax rate and certainly, you know, encourage other people to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lynn, do we have any public comments? Or Mike?
Um, I do not see any right now.
Uh, Mark, I just, I have a point for cl- clarification. Uh, you know, we did have a purchase of a commercial property. The town um, Miami and a Domain took a commercial property, which is the former tennis courts. And there was a, you know, we, I would imagine they would have to calculate that into the um the values of properties in town.
Tom, I I agree with you, they should have. If you recall, we paid a premium over, a significant premium over assessed value as part of the 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 process of of doing that, but it certainly wasn't reflected in any of the other commercial property values. And I'm surprised that it wasn't used, but that's why I asked Mr. Rogers of how they evaluated commercial properties. But it, you know, the other thing I'll comment then is at one point, this goes back uh many years, there was a purchase and sale agreement of the uh of this gas station that's on the intersection of Williams and and Bliss Roads, right at the the triangle there. Uh, Big Y was gonna buy it from O'Connell. And I sent a note to our tax collector at the time, our principal assessor, saying, you're going to have a sale, take note of this. And he sent that email to Big Y and to O'Connor, and they converted that sale from a sale to a ninety-nine year lease. So it was not a sale because they don't want a sale in town because they know what's gonna happen. So I I agree with you, Tom, it it should have impacted it. But my take is that based on the increase that we paid, premium we paid for, it didn't impact.
Uh, yeah, Mark, it looks like we do have a uh public comment.
Good.
All right, I'm moving Tom in now.
Maybe we should change the screen and and uh so we can have a full view of it.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Hey, Tom.
Sorry. Um, this is uh Tom DiNazio, twenty-four Crescent Road, Long Meadow, uh I'm a member member of the Finance Committee, but I'm speaking just as a resident on on this particular topic. Uh, sorry to join in late, I I have been watching, but um, I think Mark Gold has a has great um y- y- I agree with with everything he says, but I think there's a challenge with the nature of the diversity of the businesses in Long Meadow with moving to a split rate, which is that we have we have w- local businesses in town on way different ends of the spectrum. I I, you know, you look at, I I and I won't call out businesses specifically, but you look at some of the larger businesses and then you look at some of the local restaurants that are owned and run by people who live in town. And um a split rate similar to what we had briefly a number of years ago would absolutely have a material effect on them and and could affect their ability to um be sustainable. So um, y- you know, I I don't know what the answer is, other than maybe s- at some point, we look at some kind of tiered commercial rate, um, but to blanketly uh go to a split rate and put the local businesses as, you know, I I just don't want to reverse uh revert to that situation we had a few years ago, which was which was really dire for a number of the um the resident-owned local businesses. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Josh.
Uh, I I agree with Tom on that, um, especially the way commercial leases work. Uh, any tax increases are gonna be passed on to the businesses. I I don't want to have that happen in town right now. We got, it's been a tough time for small businesses, uh and we have a range of sizes. Um, and and what uh Mark Gold said, if we are undervaluing commercial properties, then I that's an issue that needs to be dealt with, but I would like to see that not done in the middle of people's leases and not done um i- in this manner. Um, but especially come, as we are still recovering or in the middle of pandemic, still recovering financially and economically, I I don't want to pass it on to our small businesses in town, uh we, I think we need to give them uh the support they can right now in a steady rate.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Any other residents looking to make a comment? No, there is not. Uh, looking for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. I second it.
Mike, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Just a point of order, Mark, we never really voted to open the meeting.
Yeah, I I was wondering about that. I might have spaced, I thought, maybe I spaced out there for for a minute, but.
All right.
Maybe they'll let us get get away with this one. Um, so so now looking for a a motion um to set the the factor.
So I'd make a motion that the town use a single uh tax rate uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, is that what it's for?
You have to order it, it's setting a tax rate of a factor of one point oh, Tom.
Okay, so I oh, I set a tax rate of one point oh, a single tax rate for town Long Meadow fiscal year.
Not a tax rate of one point oh, a tax rate factor. You said a tax of one point oh, we're gonna go.
A tax, no, uh people would be cheering, uh. No, we don't do that, so uh so a tax, what is it, tax factor?
Tax rate factor.
A tax rate factor of one point oh for a single tax rate, the town of Long Meadow fiscal year.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Okay.
Second.
This is for fiscal year twenty-two.
Oh, it is twenty-two, that's I thought.
This year's re- F Y twenty-two's revenue.
Okay.
So are we at fiscal twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
We're at fiscal twenty-two now?
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, sorry.
Okay, so then, as I originally said, twenty-two, we'll just go with that.
It says in your face.
Does that, uh, will you still second that, Stephen?
Yes, I will.
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? And Mike, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Ken and Jen, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on uh to old business, approval of meeting minutes. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Um, and a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Mike, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Very good, moving on to new business. Uh, two twenty twenty-two annual liquor license renewals. We need to vote to approve uh the the renewals. Um. Lynn, how how should we handle this, you think?
Um, I believe you, there was a memo, and I know Mike has painstakingly gone through every application uh in my uh prior roles, usually it would just be a bulk approval. Um, but if there was something that you needed to call out separately, you could.
In in the past, we separated restaurants from walk-in liquor sales stores, but we could do them, you know, together.
I I wonder if we want to do something differently with Iron Chef as well. Um, I don't know if they've already paid, but if we could waive their fee for next year. Or I don't know if they're holding the liquor license and abeyance, but uh this time I I don't want to stick with another bill.
How about the bottle shop? If we're gonna do Iron Chef, you really gotta do the bottle shop.
Uh, that's true.
Right, so um the payments come in after we approve um the applications today. I have received a few checks for um license renewals, but I don't believe I've received from Iron Chef or Bottle Bottle Shop at this point, so um you can't do that if you wish.
And Mark, I suggest that we approve the renewals and and eh, you know, ask encourage them to submit a a request for an abatement for the year, we could ans- handle that separately.
Okay. Good idea.
And they, you know, they they might pop up somewhere else in town, you know, you know, or something that they need it, so I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay. Okay, then can I get a a motion for to approve the licenses?
Move to approve the licenses as well.
Okay.
Just a comment, Josh had said that a couple of restaurants, and I think he had said that these brothers did not have had not submitted their insurance qualification yet. And without that, I think we, didn't we have that one or more that we're still incomplete, Mike? You're, uh.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, so I believe, which I was gonna detail in the memo, um, as a business closed to the day, we have not received the liquor liability insurance for those two restaurants that were mentioned in the memo. Um, but we did receive payment from, I believe it was Four Seasons for the bill, for the outstanding bill that had happened. So that did occur, we have not yet received the liquor liability insurance at this point. So I sent out emails and letters um and phone calls to those two businesses, so we're just awaiting that paperwork right now, and I'm hopeful that it's in sometime tomorrow or Thursday.
So waiting on May and Lee's Brothers?
Correct.
Or prove contingent on receiving the proof of insurance?
Yeah. I'll modify my motion. Why don't we make it for like be- before our next meeting?
Well, they they just have to get it towards by January first, I mean, that that legally, they only have to require, we're only required to get it by January first. I'd say, all right, you know, although our next meeting's pretty much, doesn't mean that.
Yeah. So I guess just contingent upon the submission of their their liability insurance. Stephen agrees.
Yes, I do.
So do we have a, we have a coherent motion on the table or we can amend it?
Seems right.
I got it.
Got it. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Uh, any further discussion? Oh, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Okay, we're zipping right along. Uh, twenty twenty-two seasonal population increase estimation. We need to vote on the twenty twenty-two seasonal population increase estimation. Um, looking for a motion.
So moved.
So the motion is acting under authority contained in M G L chapter one thirty-eight, section seventeen. It is estimated that the temporary increased resident population of Long Meadow as of July tenth, twenty twenty-two will be fifteen thousand eight hundred. So moved. We need a second.
I'll second it, that looks about right. I was counting up the people in my head, yeah, fifteen, eight, eight hundred and fifty-three.
Seems lower than than um, did we, did we figure out how much it it had gone up since the last census?
Um, I believe it went up point four percent.
Yeah. Less than a hundred people are there.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any further discussion? Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Mike, you need us to come sign that document?
Uh yes, I need you to sign that document along with the certification form for renewals that was also included in the packet. Um that is just stating that there were no licenses that did not um that shows to, there were. There there wasn't a license that did not renew this year, obviously contingent upon um those two businesses mentioned getting. The insurances, so I just need that signed as well. We need to send them a blank copy um stating that there wasn't a license that did not renew. I need, I need to send to the paperwork um sometime before January seventeen, preferably before January first, so. You guys wanna come in at some point within the next few weeks, that'd be great.
Okay, is Mary Beth Berger on here?
Yes, she is. Uh she was. I don't see her in there now, actually. I did see her popping before.
So the next item on the agenda is a uh the one-day liquor license application for the Long Meadow Adult Center. Looking for a uh uh one-day liquor license for an event on December sixteenth. Uh looking at approximately sixty people from six to nine thirty. They're gonna have music, they're gonna have dancing. More fun than I am.
Okay, I'll I'll move the motion to accept that uh one-day liquor license request for twelve sixteen twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The last time we did this for this group, they came back and wanted a waiver of the fee. I assume this is different from the grand opening of the adult center, and therefore we're not waiving the fee. Is that correct?
I believe so. I didn't, I didn't receive a request at this point, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Stephen. Well, I'm not opposed to the one-day liquor license. I was wondering if this is such a swell idea to have. Ten days from now, given that the rate of COVID's going up in this town and, you know, with with new strains, I'm just not sure that this is the kind of event. We ought to be helping out by by doing this. It's the timing, I'm not sure, is perfect for what they want to achieve. Sixty folks, this is not gonna be spread out over a gigantic area. Just doesn't seem like a really good idea to me at this point in time. It'd be grinchy matter, but it seems to make common sense.
The the bigger issue, Steve, that's come up in the past is whether we wanna use municipal buildings for. Events that's that have liquor sets, you know, service in them, and we've done it off and on. On special occasions in the community house, but the adult center seems to be kind of a uh an extension of where we're doing it, but. Just thought I'd mention that as well.
All right, I think we're uh we're at a place where uh we need Mike to call the roll.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Thank you. The next um item on the agenda is the street closure request. Um we had a re- a request from a um town resident to um along with some others to host a. A charity run uh starting in East Long Meadow and ending in Long Meadow. Um uh to benefit the Maple Shopping Center uh businesses and employees. And we didn't know whether or not a street closure was going to be required for that run. Um uh Lynn and Mike checked with uh the police chief. And the police chief has come to the conclusion that um no uh street closure will be will be required. Uh although they will be participating um in the in the run. Did I get most of that right?
Bottom.
So no, we don't have to take any action on this item.
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions? Uh next item, notice to incur to incur debt, Westcom.
Uh so last year, almost exactly a year ago, I brought forward to you uh a um. Update from Westcom of the purchase of Salter College. The way this works is that all of the member communities of Westcom need to bring these types of matters, so a purchase or borrowing. To each of their respective bodies and inform you of it, and you um only have the option, you can. Sorry, let me rephrase that. Um I need to provide notice of it to you. If you choose to object to it, then you would take a a vote on that. Otherwise, you don't need to do anything. Uh so tonight, I am informing you that uh the Westcom Board of Directors has voted to incur debt. To renovate the Salter College building that was purchased last year. To turn it into the home of Westcom Regional Emergency Communications Center. In doing this, it will allow Westcom to expand to accept additional communities. Right now, we are maxed out in the space at the Chicopee Police Department with um five communities. We, so we cannot accept anymore until this renovation is completed. We have been in conversations with State nine one one about the grant possibilities um that we apply for every year. Funding this renovation, but we do need the actual um notice to go out to all the communities to incur this debt. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Again, I only need a vote if you are opposing it.
Yeah, so Lynn, um you know, thirteen million dollars is an awful lot of cash. You know, that, I know the building was barely used as a college. And I'm just wondering, do we, can we see any examples of what's gonna be done with uh? You know, what are they, are they adding a, put an addition on the building, or what are some of the needs that they have that? Are missing from this facility as it is?
The facility has been uh unused for quite a long time.
Yeah.
It needs to be, there's um some exterior work that needs to be done, some roofing work, the HVAC system needs to be upgraded. Parking lot needs to be repaired. Um it's it's mostly um just renovation work. Nothing is going to be uh demolished except for some interior walls to open up the uh dispatch center space. Uh there's no addition being planned. There is some leaking that's happening uh from that overhang. If you've, you know, driven by the site, there's a parking overhang. That has had some uh water leaks through it, so there's some water damage that needs to be repaired. And then the building just needs to be outfitted and brought up to uh today's standards. Uh there will be eventually some uh rental possibilities associated with it as well for some training rooms. That other uh local agencies could use.
All right, cuz that, yeah, that seems like an awful lot for parking lots and roofs and all that, but I guess that's what it costs, huh?
Yeah, I mean, we, as you saw, we just completed uh two massive uh facilities here, and it's not a. Small undertaking, whether it's a renovation or a complete rebuild um or brand-new construction. Uh we do have uh some workup schematic designs, but nothing that goes into great detail yet. It was a. Feasibility plan that has been developed so far. So that was phase one. Phase two will select the architect and then actually develop the design plans.
Okay, and they had to remove all those dancing poles that were in there for fewer days, I guess.
Yeah, I think that may have been taken out by the uh by Salter College.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
I read your lips. Um. He. I'm losing my mind. Um oh, one, uh that is. Does Westcom pre- is it predicted to be able to service this debt? Is it going to be self-sustaining? And if not, uh how are we if we are on the hook for it?
So if you have a district agreement, the individual communities are not on the hook for it. Westcom, this is built in.
Okay, and so they they expect to be able to bring in the revenue from the towns to service this debt down there.
Yeah, and additionally, they'll continue to apply for the State nine one one grant funding that's been supporting the district at this point. But right now, uh the district, I mean, sorry, the. Eight nine one one grants have been covering uh each municipality's uh assessment, which has been saving. Providing some budget relief for us over the past few years. Eventually, when we hit year five, we'll be completely, each community will be on their own for supporting their share of Westcom. But as we grow, as Westcom grows, I, the more communities we add, it should um lighten the load for each community's financial burden.
Steve, do you have a question?
Uh yes, is there, is there a waiting list for a community, I mean, are folks online to join us once more space is available?
Uh there's been a lot of conversation with other communities. The executive director um for a while, there was meeting almost weekly with a different community. Uh some are hesitant to join right now because if they join, they're going to be just put in a queue. Until the construction of the building's done, because we are, we literally are out of space in Chicopee to add any more communities.
And also just a comment uh in terms of when uh you hire an architect. I sincerely hope you hire an architect who takes into account alternative energies, whether it's panels on the roof, because I don't think any trees blocking the way. Whether it's geothermal, um if this building's gonna help uh pay for itself, that's one way to do it, so. Not all architects seem to think that, but I would hope you would do that.
Great point.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Lynn? So no news is good news, right? So is that it?
That's it, yes, on my end.
All right. Uh last but not least, the opioid litigation participation agreements.
So a um a provisional settlement's been reached with the three largest opioid distributors. And um the terms of the settlement dictate that the payment will be made over a payment, over a term of nine to eighteen years. If there's sufficient participation from municipalities nationwide. We don't know exactly what share Long Meadow will get yet. That's still being determined by the Attorney General's Office. Um it, but some items that will be considered in what our allocation is relates to um. Our population, the number of opioid-related deaths, and the financial impact the opioid opioid. Crisis has had on our community. Uh so we, again, I won't know for likely um a a month or two more. Uh but what we do need tonight is the select board to vote to um. Uh authorize the town manager to sign these participation agreements. There are two of them. One represents the three largest opioid distributors, and the other agreement represents Jansen, um Johnson and Johnson.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, Lynn, is there any way that we could do a confidential sort of data analysis or data sample? Of folks in town who have um have had been dealing with opioid abuse. You know, currently or past, in the past few years, and try to get an idea, cuz that's a difficult number to to figure out. You know, the the costs. Um but I think you need input from the sort of the the victims, you know, in some ways. I mean, you you look at people who have a, are living with an addict, and every time they turn around, you know. Money's missing from their wallet, or something has been hacked uh and so forth. And I don't know how you'd get an estimate of that cost, of those kinds of costs unless you had some data. About, you know, how how people have been putting up with this, and of course, I think that when we do get money from this, there should be definitely. Money channel to help families who are coping with this and and have some sort of resources uh locally. Um in addition to what they may have in in the Pioneer Valley. Um but Lynn, is there any chance that we, or do we need to have data like that? Or is this such a big lawsuit that they don't really care about our specific community?
Um I wouldn't say they don't care about our specific community, but I don't believe they will be asking us for updated data.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark.
And Lynn, I, when I got this this afternoon and I read through it, I'm trying to understand that, and maybe for people at home, we should. But that town of Long Meadow took on a lawsuit based on a number of communities around the country with a. With a law firm that was soliciting individual lawsuits, uh opioid. Companies, wholesalers, everything. Separately from that, there's a a settlement that the attorneys general have have reached with the. W- with the same group of people, my, is my understanding, and I don't know the relationship so well, and so I guess my question is. You know, this, this opt-in or settlement that we're looking to sign. Is separate from what I'll call the the global or the the national. Settlement that the attorneys general is doing, and why is it in our best interest to sign this rather than? Just go along with what the Attorney General, Attorney General of Massachusetts determines is best for. Our communities.
Did my best to answer that, Mark. Um this, the information that was received uh today. Came from the attorneys representing the town of Long Meadow. From the firm that uh whenever Long Meadow opted into this class action suit back in probably twenty fourteen, maybe twenty sixteen. Um roughly in that timeframe there, um these were, this was the firm that most municipalities were going with. Um so they have, they have specifically um directed that we sign these documents. That we opt into these participation agreements, we sign these documents. I have not received anything from the Attorney General's Office, so I do not want to um limit. What our recovery may be by missing out on this timeline.
Okay, uh my my record show was like twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that we have a, something from August of. Twenty eighteen when we signed that initial agreement. I guess my only question is that, you know. We we don't wanna limit our our recovery by missing this timeline, but are we limiting our recovery by signing onto this rather than? What the Attorney General may, I I I don't have the answer to that. And is it worth us looking into that, it's in any way? I mean, the question is, is is the, is the, i- is the settlement that the lawyers, we s- we hooked up with. Better than the settlement that the Attorney General got? I don't know the answer.
And I don't think we'll know that answer before the end of this month. The, I know that there was a. MMA has been advocating about the share that the Attorney General should give out to the communities. Um but that hasn't, um I don't think anything's been finalized yet. Uh and I thought that the Attorney General share was, it didn't matter if you opted into a lawsuit or not. Whereas this one, you know, obviously, we're eligible for it because we were part of that class action. Uh so I I don't have the details on the Attorney General matter. I I'm not aware that they've been shared publicly yet.
Okay, the, the other thing I'll comment is that this does say that our opt-in with the Attorney Generals is void until ninety-five percent of the. Communities opt in, and that's very different, because that kicks up the amount of money that goes to the states from. You know, fifty percent to seventy percent of the settlement kind of thing, so it it sounds like this is a better deal. I just, you know, not being an attorney, not knowing the details. Uh and and kind of getting on a short notice, I I know I have some resources that could have checked on this had I looked on it at it. But at this point, I guess we cross our fingers and hope we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, and I I wanna set the expectation that I am not anticipating this is going to be a large sum of money. That is going to alleviate all of our needs associated with the opioid epidemic, I think. what's what's happened in Long Meadow is is not um certainly not a good situation in terms of what families have been struggling with, but there are many other communities, certainly across the state and across the country, that have been hit much worse. Uh, and so I don't um want to hold any false hope out there that we will be getting a huge share of money that we can, you know, address all these needs.
I I I've been told that the money we can expect is on the order of what was received for the cigarette settlement ten or fifteen years ago, which the town of Long Meadow, you know, boosted the health department's budget for anti-smoking, but didn't balance the budget, as they say.
Lynn, you need, you need a motion that authorizes you to sign those those participation agreements?
Yes.
Okay. You're uh, you're muted, Tom.
I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize Lynn to sign those documents.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Mike, roll call, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Thus endeth the ballgame. Does anybody else have anything they want to share?
Yes, Steve.
Well, since the last item on this thing is correspondence from Comcast, I have to say, maybe it was just coincidental, but the fact that Comcast let everyone know that there's a nice little rate increase, that's just like five days after we signed that agreement with them, was really, it was just like a little kick in the shins there about, um. Um, yeah, here you go, folks. Got this agreement, now we're jacking up your rates nicely. Um. I thought their timing was lousy. I also think apparently we, there's nothing we can do about it, although in that agreement, it says something about we're a rate, we're a rate-setting entity, uh, I so, I assume is superseded by the state and the feds, but um, given what we just went through with Comcast, I did not think that was um, their timing was less than perfect. I, not that we can do anything about it, but I actually have gotten calls saying this is pretty ridiculous for how we're, you know, they're charging a lot of money. Because this keeps going up.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Have a great night. Thank you, everyone.
Wait a second, we need a mo-, you need a motion to adjourn and vote.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
Thank you.
Second. Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Thanks, guys, and then see you soon.
Night.
Have a good one.
See you, everyone.